Mayor, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for November 4th, 2021, to order at 7:04 PM. On roll call, council members, Ballast Schreier.
Here.
Fakori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our special meeting. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State in New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that that meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special meeting notice in the record in Herald News and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and also by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was posted and transmitted on November 1st, 2021, and published on November 4th, 2021. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. For resolutions this evening, we have R-409-21 approving settlement in the matter of Malick versus Borough of Elmwood Park, R-410-21 appoint part-time keyboarding clerk one, Linda Bateman, Tax Collector's Office, R-411-21 appoint part-time keyboarding clerk one, Michael Giuliano, Tax Collector's Office, and R-412-21 approve the consent agenda.
May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First, by Wetchler, second by Pellegrine. On roll call, council members Ballast Schreier.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo.
Yes.
Golebeck.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these ordinances here? Resolutions, I'm sorry. If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for November 4th, 2021, to order at 7:07 PM. On roll call, council members Ballast Schreier.
Here.
Fakori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm gonna sound redundant, whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State in New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that that meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the record in Herald News of Woodland Park and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2021, and published on January 13th, 2021. Would anyone from the public care to speak on any subject they would like? Yes. Your name and address, please?
Pamela Troy, 831 Elmwood Drive. I just wanna speak on behalf of another resident, Charles Vitale. Charles is, he's quite special. He suffers from severe OCD and anxiety. And the plans for egress, Lot 7, is causing him extreme distress.
Pam, could you tell us the location that you're talking about?
It's East 54th.
It's the main and...
East 54th, okay.
Yeah. So I would just like to ask that before any decision's are made, that you please keep Charles in your mind. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else care to speak from the public on any subject? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to recognize our Borough Auditor, Mr. Stephen Wilcox, and our CFO, Mr. Roy Rigatano, to give a presentation on our ARP funding and how it can be spent.
Steve, I remember one time when you would say a handout would be candy or pizza. It'd be something like that.
It's not looking like that. What happened to the good old days? Oh, that's why.
Oh, there we go. Oh, boy. So what I handed out were three different documents. The first one is the one page, and if you go down towards the bottom, your code is 0211. And this tells you how much ARP money the borough is receiving, and that's $2,089,812.36, of which $1,044,906.18 has already been received, and the second tranche will be received at some point early next year. The second document is the local finance notice. I'm not gonna bore everybody with all the particulars, but this is what the state sent out back in June after the federal government disseminated the funds across the country. And it's got a bunch of the details in terms of how the revenue, how that money can be spent. And I will direct you to Page 2, under permitted use of grant funds. And essentially, there's six bullets. The first is replacing lost revenue. The second is investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, providing premium pay for essential workers, supporting public health expenditures, addressing COVID-19-related negative economic impacts, and then addressing disproportionate public health and economic impacts of the crisis on the heartiest of communities, populations, and households. Very, very broad, very, very generic. So the third handout is something that I prepared on your behalf earlier this year and sent to the state. It'll be updated for the next three years, and this is the revenue loss calculation worksheet. And this will tell you, year by year by year going forward, how much of this money can actually be used in the budget to offset revenue lost from the pandemic. Now, in 2020, that calculation was about $1.6 million. Now, we didn't use, in 2021's budget, our budget was done and adopted before a lot of this came out. So this'll be updated for 2021 with a new calculation as to what the amount that's eligible to be used in the 2022 budget. But I, number one, there's a built-in 4.1% price inflator each year as you do the calculation. So I would presume the number won't be 1.6, but it'll be a fairly respectable number in terms of what could be used in the 2022 budget as revenue loss. Now, part of the caveats in this particular program is you can't reduce taxes, but you can make them flat. And again, that money's available for '22, '23, and '24. So in terms of being able to utilize the money, again, infrastructure, sewer, water, broadband. I know that the administrator came before you a number of weeks ago with a project of about $400,000 for sewer that was certified by the engineer that it meant the definition of infrastructure.
Drainage correction.
Again, it's all about meeting the definitions, you know, and the categories. It's much like, if you remember early on in the pandemic, when the CARES money came out. Again, broad-based definitions, a lot of flexibility in terms of how the money could be used. And in that particular act, it really was focused on the pandemic testing and then morphed into vaccines after the fact. So, and redirected personnel because of the pandemic. This is, again, very broad in terms of the categories, but pretty specific in terms of how you can use the money. So...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, 2022 is, you know, a few months away. We'll be starting the budget process early in the year and all that. So based on what you had mentioned, that it can be used for revenue shortfalls, not to cut taxes, but to potentially get you to a flat tax levy.
Correct.
Talk through that. How would that work in a 2022 budget scenario if the council were interested in something like that?
So, first, we'll revise and update this revenue calculator, and that'll tell us what the maxes that could be used for 2022. And that'll be based on the '21 realized revenues, you know, plus or minus, plus or minus. So, again, your budget process will be the same. You'll, you know, you'll go through your departments, you'll, you know, royal put together, you'll slot in who gets contractual raises, how much did garbage go up, did it go up, how much did sewer go up, did it go up, pension, what have you. And then you look at the revenue side and see what makes sense. Now, over the last two years, every municipality's taken hits in municipal court, in interest of their earning because the rates have gone through the floor. In some municipalities, construction stopped for a period of time, so those fees were few and far between for a number of months. So we look at everything at once in terms of where did 2021 perform, what revenues did we really collect, and then what should we anticipate reasonably in 2022. Again, to continue the progress that's been made over the last few years, in that you've had, you've increased taxes, but by very small incremental amounts, to be able to meet the expenses of the borough and not, you know, go in and utilize all your fund balance with the knowledge and forethought that if you knew you weren't gonna replace it. Because obviously, you've been on a good continuum, the rating agencies see it, and we wanna stay on that good continuum. So that decision will be up to the council once we have, say, 95% or 97% of the budget put together. And the decision will be made by you folks. All right, here's where we are, here's what we can do, what do we wanna do?
So if this whole process runs its course, and between the CFO and yourself and the council, the proposed tax levy has gone up $200,000, let's just say, and then this document says your revenue shortfall is $200,000 or in excess of that, we can dip into these funds to make up that 200 and not increase, but stay where it is?
Correct.
And that can be done for the years '22 through '24?
As long as you still have money available that you haven't used, sure. And as long as annually, the revenue loss calculation bears out that there's a loss that can be recouped through these funds.
Do we expect losses, or is that too hard to do?
We have to wait till we close out the year in order to do '21. But again, the calculation was 1.6 million for '21, so I expect it'll be less for '22. But also factoring in that, in the overall plan, the feds factored in a 4.1% inflation factor. So, I mean, they'll kinda probably offset each other.
Steve, so basically, we're receiving for '21, $1 million, for '22, $1 million.
Correct.
Now, I know during the pandemic, we ran up some costs. Where does that fit into this scenario?
Those costs were either covered by CARES money that was distributed by the county or by FEMA submissions that eventually one hopes that you get reimbursed.
Okay, so this $1 million is basically clear in that sense?
Correct. Correct. What's done is done. The money you spent in 2020 was accounted for in 2020. Any money you've spent this year is accounted for within the budget, perhaps has been submitted to FEMA to get reimbursed, but is accounted for in the budget right now.
Okay.
So essentially, this is all new money that can be used for some of the things that I talked about before.
Steve, what's the deadline to spend these monies?
December 31, 2024.
For both, both tranches or whatever?
Both, yeah. It's the American Rescue Plan, one program, and they decided to give the money over two years and two tranches.
So, and I thank, I guess, the administrator and whomever set this up with Roy and the auditor, because this is exactly what I was looking for. And it is fascinating to me, and I didn't even know this through all the reading I've done on this, that we potentially could use some of these funds to not raise the tax levy either next year, '23, or '24. This is new information to me, and we were in a position where we were ready to spend a quarter of that money without having that conversation.
That's not correct.
So if I could just finish, I'm just very happy that we have that information, and my position on this, we don't know how the budget's gonna look in 2022. So I personally wouldn't touch this money until we know what kind of tax levy increase the CFO recommends, because then we'll be able to use some of this money potentially to not raise taxes on our residents who are already hurting.
Last year?
So I think that's the logical approach here.
Sorry for interrupting you. This year, we're gonna spend $1,004,000 on road improvement. I said we should take $300,000 to $400,000 of that and put it towards the drainage, so that we're only bonding $1 million. You are spending when you're bonding. Do you understand that?
Yes, not all at once.
Not all at once, but you are spending.
Yes.
So let's not mix that up like we're some great heroes here who are gonna stop taxes from going up in the future by bonding on the back end and confuse the public.
There's no confusion, Mayor. We all learned something new today, and I think it is absolutely incredible news, that we could be in a situation in '22, '23, and/or '24 where we could potentially not raise the levy or significantly lower the increase by holding on these funds and seeing what happens. That is great news. Will it happen? I don't know. But we're much more educated on this subject now than we were a couple of weeks ago when we were ready to start spending this money.
Well, problem is, you weren't. We knew we had a million coming each year.
Correct.
Okay? So it doesn't take a super scientist to understand, you're getting $1 million, now how are you gonna spend it? And by bonding, you're spending. So we cut down on the bonding a little, we take the $600,000, and we put it towards reducing the taxes in the future.
Hasn't that ship sailed? The council agreed to do the million in paving, agreed to do the drainage project. Both of these situations have been long resolved and long decided, and we're still talking about it.
Because, the difference is that we've been bonding for, 10 years back, I think you gave me the records, with about $500,000 a year bonding for road improvement. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, I gave it to...
Well, thank you, Roy. Then we went up to $1 million. Okay, we wanna catch up. Now we're going up to 1.4, considering everything. Curbs, which is essential, you don't pave unless you got a curb there.
Which you create...
I'm sorry?
Which you asked for, and we've done.
Because it's logical.
But you've asked for that, that was never done before.
Right, and it's the smart thing to do. In building, you do not pave a road if there's no curb there. It's just basic common sense in building. But you don't even think of paving a road or putting a curb in unless the drainage is proper. It's drainage first, then comes the curb, then comes the road. That's the natural order of things in order to do it right. So what I'm proposing is that we take whatever the drainage number was, 360,000, 380,000, we take this money, bring down that bonding back to $1 million where it's kinda acceptable, and take the balance of the money and put it towards, as you're suggesting, lowering the taxes for the next two years.
Didn't we already bond this out? I'm sorry, didn't we already do the bonding for this?
No.
What did we bond?
It was right on first reading.
But what was the number?
I don't have it yet.
I mean, I think we've already done this.
No, nobody didn't. I would veto that.
It was on first reading, second reading is next week. If it was 1.4, my guess is what, 1.9?
And the entire council had discussed this, and we all agree that that's how we're gonna do it.
How you gonna do what?
We agreed to do it the way we did the first reading. We've all agreed to do that.
Well, now, in light of this information, does the council still wanna do that?
I think to the councilman's point, now that we're cognizant that this money could be used to maintain a zero tax increase for the next potentially four years, is that correct?
Three to four years.
Three to four, three years?
Three years.
I think we should look into the councilman's point and see where we're at, instead of throwing half the money for one of the years, all that one project. We should see how much, what our budget comes out to, and see if we could flatline taxes, municipal taxes.
Mr. Fasolo, do you realize when we bond, that is credit carding?
Mayor, I understand that.
Okay, so my point is, that you're spending that money. You're saving it here via the grant, but you're spending that money. So we have an opportunity to balance it, take away from the bonding, so you're spending less and credit carding less in the future. I think that would be a good solution here.
Don't you think our taxpayers deserve to have better roads, better sewage, and everything else? Nothing has been done for 30 and 40 years. Don't you think they deserve it? They came through with the COVID. They paid their taxes. They didn't complain. These residents pay their taxes in Elmwood Park. Don't you think they deserve it now, to get something back that this council is doing for them?
Do they deserve it? Of course they deserve it, but there's also...
Then why you don't want to do...
There's a balancing act of fooling the public by saying...
Bobby, we're not fooling nobody.
You're paving their streets, and it's not gonna cost them no more money, when in essence, it is through the bonding and down the road. So what I'm saying is you have to have a balance to this situation.
Right, but our residents have been balanced all along for the last 30 and 40 years. We're gonna patch this, we're gonna patch that, we're gonna patch this, we're gonna patch that. We need to fix it once and for all, get it straight the right ways, so our residents know what's going on in this town, and be proud that this council is doing something for this town and for our residents, finally. You keep on saying, oh, we're not gonna do this, and we're not gonna do that, we'll wait to this, and wait to that. How much more are you gonna wait for? You can't keep on putting a drainage on this town. We need to get it strained out once and for all. So if you're gonna veto it after this council decided that we were doing this, so I don't know why this is gonna go on like this.
I wanna move, I personally wanna move forward to what we've discussed more than once, and we all agreed on, and I wanna move, that's how my feeling is. I don't want this discussion to keep going on every meeting. And so that's where I stand. I wanna go with what we had all decided. It's up to everyone else if they feel the same way.
Yes, please.
Well, my opinion is, I heard what you have been saying, Mayor, and I kind of agreed with you the last time, only this new information came tonight before me, which I didn't know that you can utilize that money for the next three years and have a flat rate. I didn't know that, I think we all learned that this evening. More information's gonna be coming out, I guess you said, right? The second reading isn't till next week.
Wednesday.
Yeah, next week, so we're not voting on this tonight. But in light of this new information, I'm gonna really think hard about my decision for next week.
Lorraine, you're a very reasonable person. Do you realize that bonding, that money, is putting the town in debt, future debt, which will bring up the cost for the residents in terms of taxation? It brings it up. Okay, it doesn't hit hard the first year, because it's spread over 20 years, but you're still adding to that debt, which is subject to interest.
I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and I may have more questions for Roy during the week. I wanna go over my notes and everything, and I will ask some more questions before I make my decision next.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of this new information, I'll have to really think about it. Thanks, Mayor.
Daniel, you care to speak any further on the subject?
No, if we can do drainage and roads this year and also keep taxes close to flat the next three years, what a home run for the residents. If we spend $500 in drainages this year, and then in two years, Roy comes and says we need to raise the tax levy by 500, and our residents knew that we had 500 on the table, but we did it for drainage, that's not gonna fly. So I think we bond what we agreed to, we already made that decision. Mayor, you reserve all your rights to veto, whatever you wanna do, go for it. Elmwood Park is gonna be better off with the improvements, and we'll be better off by being cautious with this money and potentially keeping taxes flat. That's a win-win, in my opinion.
Well, just based on what you just said, that home run is $1,004 in bonding, so...
Right.
Okay.
Mayor, before we had the information about this money, we were still bonding this money, so you were for it, but then this money came along.
No, I wasn't for $1,004. I wasn't for $1,004.
$400,000 in the drainage improvements, you were for. We all sat down in the back, and we were all for it, but now this new money comes to light, and you're potentially gonna veto something that's gonna help many residents with the water in their basements, the water on their houses.
Water in the basement, that's how I feel. I was never for $1,004 in bonding. I was never for that, from day one, never.
You weren't for a road program and a drainage project?
I'm sorry?
You were never for the road program or the drainage project?
Yeah, and once we culminated the numbers, then at that point, we came to $1,004, I said we gotta stop at $1 million, maybe we only go $600,000 in road repave, and the $400,000 goes in for, which is part of our infrastructure, for the drainage, resolving the drainage in the town. You got corners that people ice skate across during the winter.
Exactly. We all agree on that, Mayor, we all agree.
But I never agreed to over $1 million, never, and I won't agree to that either.
Well, as Mayor, I wouldn't veto a road program or a drainage project that would help our residents.
You can call it what you want, but I think what I'm doing is super helping our residents in the long run, and we're not disguising it by bonding. Bond when you have to. Moving along?
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox and Mr. Rigatano.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. Okay, next on our agenda is correspondence. I had sent this via email, as I got the initial award electronically through the Sage system, but I also included in your packet the NJDOT Fiscal Year '22 Award Letter in the amount of $206,000 for Grove Street improvements. Any questions?
Can we ask the engineer to start an estimate, you know, design proposal? Because it'd be good to move on these projects.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda... Okay, next on our agenda is our engineers' report. Unfortunately, Mr. LeManowitz could not be here this evening. Typically, he attends our second work session due to a conflict on our first work session, but with Thanksgiving, we only have one work session this month. So in front of you is our monthly status report. Next is resolutions. We have some vacation buyback requests. Any questions on those? We also have a handicap parking request, which is being reviewed by Sergeant Scott and will not be on the agenda until we have his approval. Third, we have a resolution to refund premium through our tax collector's office. D, we have a permit refund request from the Building Department for a permit that was issued twice on accident. And then lastly, for resolutions, we have a firefighter volunteer application. Any questions? Five A is our Salary Ordinance Amendment. Due to the creation of the cannabis board, we had to add the attorney for said board as well as adjust... We have a new tax collector and then also an increase in salary due to the acquisition of a degree for our recreation director. So all of those are included on this Salary Ordinance Amendment. Any questions? Five B was discussed at a previous meeting. It is the new sump pump ordinance that addresses seasonable exceptions with our sump pumps.
Yeah, if I may comment, Sal, good job on bringing that to fruition. I'd like for us to continue now on the high ordinance.
I'm working on that, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that this particular ordinance reflected exactly what yourself and the council and DA agreed on. So happy to meet Dick with you.
Thank you. Erin?
Okay, moving on to departmental reports. We have the Building Department Monthly Report for October 2021, our Millennium Strategies, which is our Grant Writer Monthly Report, which shows the activity from the beginning of the year through October 2021, and then also our Library Board Meeting Minutes for September 20th, 2021. Mayor, that's all I have on my agenda this evening.
Thank you, Erin. Council reports, we'll start with Councilwoman Ballasteri.
Mayor, I have nothing for tonight, so progress.
Councilman Focori?
Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Fasolo? Progress. Councilman Golebet?
Progress.
Councilwoman Pellegrini?
I have one thing. Sorry.
They thought it was too good to be true.
My Residents Assistance Program update. The People's Pantry, sponsored by the Residents Assistance Program, will be giving out 120 free Thanksgiving turkeys and breakfast in a bag to our Elmwood Park residents in need. The date is November 8th at 12:00 PM. Location, Elmwood Park Recreation Center Parking Lot, 500 Mola Boulevard. Elmwood Park residents only, must have Elmwood Park ID. If there's any questions, please call Angela Fava at 211-796-1457, extension 106. This is the first year that the program is doing this. Hopefully, we will be able to continue it every year through the generosity of so many, so thank you. Also, I'd like to thank Council President Doris Wetchler for her beautiful fall display in the hallway. She put it together herself, and when you walk in, it really does look beautiful. So Doris, thank you for taking that extra step and making it look nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. That's a great effort of yours that you're putting in with that entity, and it's really something that we all could be very, very proud of.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President Wetchler?
Yes, I do. Mayor, do you have anything about the library?
No, nothing other than we've got a meeting coming up soon.
All right.
Status quo.
I'll hit you with it. Last two weeks, I did with...
What was that? Why did you... What was the preview? What's this preview going on?
Yeah, I want to tell you what I did. The last two weeks, I was working with inspectors, the library contractor, to see what was going on. I had Steve Pope just there. I had Tony Jimmy from the Building Department, electrical inspector, the plumbing. I had the fire inspector there. We walked around last Friday. I hadn't been here this Wednesday. They went through another inspection.
Inspection with it.
They were going there without you, I suppose.
Oh, no, I was there with them. But the contractor, I called everybody there. Because nothing's getting done. It's almost two years already, and you know, by now, we should have something done. So now, I have all of the inspectors working, I have the contractor there. And I told him, I hope he wants to be home for holidays because he's not going to be left out of that building until he finishes everything. We're hoping by this week, we'll have all the inspections done.
Well, your wishes are wishes also. This should be coming to an end.
Well, this shouldn't have been this long. It shouldn't have been this long for me to get so pissed off in plain English to go have these inspectors go over there with the contractor and everybody else to see exactly what was going on.
Yeah, well, we've been having reports from our inspectors monthly, sometimes twice a month. Michael, can you please chime in on that in terms of how we've been asking our Building Department to stay on top of things?
The Building Department has to stay on top of it.
All right, let them speak.
Mayor, everything falls back to the contractor. The Building Department does not call for an inspection. The contractor does. So you're aware of that, and Council Presidents are aware of that. We're at the mercy of the contractor here. Our Building Department is ready to go. The contractor is to blame.
No, I agree. That's exactly what I did. That's why I called the contractor, and I had him meet me there with the inspectors. So this way, he goes step by step through each inspector to find out exactly what needed to be done, and things were changed since what was on the drawings or whatever. I'm not sure of a lot of things that they were talking about. But if it wasn't... I'm going to pat myself on the back. If it wasn't for me doing it, it'd still be, you know, procrastinated for another three to four months. It is not... It shouldn't be that way. I'm hoping that this library within the next two weeks has all the inspections. So by January 1, the beginning of the new year, that that library is going to be open. And I'm staying on top because I'm meeting with the inspectors and the Building Department. They have been fantastic. They have been doing everything. These inspectors have been doing anything. I'm in contact with the contractor now to do it. I want the contractor there when I decide to call this, when all the gentlemen in this department, you know, when all the departments come. I call them and ask them when they could do it. We go meet over there to make sure the builder's there, and all, the plumber, the electrical, everybody's there, the fire inspector's there, to make sure every one of those things are done correctly once and for all.
Yeah, appreciate the effort, but I would think that... Let me get to the book.
Go ahead.
A letter should go to the contractor and the architect, finish the project, or get out. And then from that point on, any money's left, we would take to finish the project.
No.
That's the right course a year ago. Hasn't been done.
Well, you know what? You've been mayor, and I've been sitting here and just gotten mad enough that I put my foot down and said, I do it, because nobody else is doing it. You could have called the contractor, just like I called the contractor, and met with the inspectors and asked them to do this with me, to get it done, because people are complaining in this town, and I don't blame them. For two years to have a library not working, it's not fair either to them. They pay taxes in town, they want to see their library done. It's going to be beautiful once it's done. But you could have called the contractor and made an appointment, just like I did, and asked all the inspectors...
I've had four or five appointments with them.
Mayor, can I just say something?
Yeah, please, please.
Mayor and I met with the contractor several times, with the construction official and members of his staff, and we were told by members of the board to butt out, so...
The Library Board?
Yes.
Well, sorry, I went over their heads.
I'm just telling you that we personally met with the contractor. We tried to expedite the process, and we were asked to not get involved because it falls under the board.
Well, guess what, Mike? I did it anyway without the board. Because you know what? It's not fair to our town, it's not fair to anybody. And I just got done, like I said, I just got mad two weeks ago and said, that's it. It's got to be done, once and for all. The taxpayers don't need this. And for anybody to say to butt out because you have the authority to do it is wrong. I don't care who it is. It's wrong that, you know, you couldn't did it. This should have been done a year, a year and a half ago. Well, now it's going to be done because I'm meeting with them next week. I'm meeting with the contractor and all the inspectors again to see if I can have it done. So finally, maybe by January 1, this library will be open. And it'll be dedicated to the Mayor, Mola. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the council, and my report is, after this evening, progress. Moving along? Yes, please.
I'd just like to update the council and the members of the public, especially Ms. Grislex here, regarding the Patterson music. So I've been at a couple meetings over the past week with Patterson command staff from their police department and involved with their legal counsel, and Mr. Engraffi is also involved. So as you know, it started at Eastside Park. We fixed that. It moved to the bonfire. We think we fixed that because they were threatened to go after their liquor license. Now it's a car club, Honda car club, that is assembling in various parking lots along Route 20, 200, 300 cars at a clip. Everybody knows Patterson PD is understaffed and extremely busy. They deal with shootings, homicides, armed robberies regularly. For them to get a car to handle that type of complaint, it goes in a queue and it gets prioritized. By the time they get there, we've been so disturbed by the noise that we're becoming used to it almost. It's not an excuse, it's an explanation. But that's not good enough for us. So we're working on trying to draft a mutual aid agreement where, and I'm not trying to volunteer my officers to do more than they have to anyway. We've got our hands full here. But if I can get a car or two over there to spot it, to hopefully disperse the group or wait for a Patterson unit to come, we're working on that as part of the plan. We're also working on a plan to see if we have jurisdiction over there since our residents are being affected by it, where we can get those people in this court. I'm being told that the Patterson courts are so overrun. If a summons is issued for noise, the person is told to sit in the back of the court. Court's over, the judge calls him up, and he says, time served, no fine. So, you know, what's the lesson learned? Or what's the discouragement for them to not do it? It's not there. So we're working diligently to try to get this resolved. Our hands are tied, but we're still moving the ball forward and trying to get this done for our residents. And I'm a resident. I live close to there. I'm affected by it. All the people behind you are residents. They hear it. Nobody's happy about this, and we're doing our best to get this resolved.
Thank you, Mike, for straightening it out. I know there's people out there that needed that explanation. May I have a motion to open to the floor? Anyone from the public care to speak on any item they wish? Yes, sir. Excuse me, Carl. I made a mistake. I have to call for a motion. Just one second.
No, it was made by Council President Wetchler, seconded by Councilwoman Pellegrini. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Carl, I'm sorry.
Paul Roberts, 260 Washington Ave. I stood up here before and asked you guys to handle the streetlights in the apartments, which has been handled. Thank you very much. My second issue I have is the street lighting going from Dunkin' Donuts up to Obel Ave is dark at night, and you have a crosswalk there. PSCNG needs to come in and do their survey on that street to get that rectified for the residents crossing that street with kids. Somebody's going to get hit up there. When I came here in January, that was one of the streets I mentioned at the time I was standing here.
Carl, is that at the summit, right at the top where the crosswalk is?
No, halfway through.
Halfway through, further down towards Dunkin' Donut?
Almost down by Park Place. So there's a crosswalk there, and it's dark. A kid or an adult is going to get hit crossing that street at night.
Okay. Mike, can we...
Contact PSC...
Public service?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else care to speak? Mr. Freitag?
Freitag, 35 Hillman Drive. Microphone, that is a concern. At many of the meetings on the planning board, we'll end up stretching one of those microphones or whatever. This one is kind of on and off. We've had presentations by architects and people, applicants. Is there any way that one of those microphones can have a longer wire on it? Just extend one to the other? Okay, thank you. Regarding the money that Mr. Wilcox had spoken about, the auditor, I'm a little cloudy, maybe I wasn't listening as well as I should have. But it's approximately a million dollars over a three-year period? Okay, but three years, that money can be used to offset any possible increases, correct? So you can have a zero-based budget for three years. Now, getting back to the bonded money, it's 1.9, I believe you said?
That was just a guess. If the project's 1.4, Mr. Rigatano didn't know, but with, you know, hard and soft costs, my guess is a million four. But I'm...
Million four is what I...
And that's the way I understand it.
I mean, yeah.
Okay, now, just maybe something I'm a little cloudy about. If the project would need to be done, it's going to... The projects need to be done, drainage and whatever else. It's a million four right now, whatever the other costs are they are, to be paid by bonding. Now, if you were to take some of that money, as was suggested, that you would have into the, three years into the future to use, you could offset that down to a million. Bond a million, put 400,000 in. The projects would still be accomplished, but you'd have 400,000 less spent. Okay, less to be used. You wouldn't have that in the future to spend, but I don't know. What are the interest rates you're getting on the bonds? Approximately? Interest rates that you'll be paying on the bond?
That's why I had some questions for Roy next week.
But it would be money regardless. Money that you would have to pay that if you use this money, which I assume, when would you possibly get any of it? In hand or however you would get it, you could put into the budget?
Mike, we have half.
Ah, okay.
Then he said early '22 we'll get the other half.
Okay, now, so that would be available for use.
Yes.
So if you use a million bond, not the 400,000, you'd accomplish the projects. It's just that you wouldn't have that 400,000.
Mr. Freitag, I just looked it up. The road program bond is for $1,020,000. Then there's a separate bond for the gutter and drainage, which is $325,000.
I will throw up for second reading at the next meeting?
Correct. If you don't spend it, you don't pay interest on it. Yeah.
Why not spend the whole 1.4 and not bond anything? Like, you could take that logic very far, right?
But I think there was a plan to spend more.
That was the...
I know, there was some discussion.
That was the mayor's proposal and the council in another direction.
Jeff, anyone else care to speak from the public? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body has the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel matters, litigation, legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the bill no longer requires the confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Counsel, can we take two minutes? Okay?